If you don't mind, Wayne, I'll start here. That way when he signs them, I had a chance to look at them too. Is that fair? No?
There you go. That's impossible.
No, no, there they are.
I'll take these over here.
Oh, okay. There you go. There you go.
We're having a method now, huh?
Well, you were signing, so I think it's just good protocol that I see them too.
Yeah.
Flow is better. None of these are automatics.
There's no back to Craig, 'cause he just let me send the back of it.
I'll get you.
Okay.
The department likes to repair stuff, don't they, Wayne?
Mm-hmm. You say they like to repair stuff?
Yeah. Their parts are not cheap.
Don't wanna get them out of order.
Nope.
Can you do this? We have a question for you. It's a monthly fee. Is that a new radio system?
It's the rent of the, I can ask her to make sure, but it's the rent of the tower.
It's just, I don't recall it that much. I thought it was said under something like the tower.
We got a couple of little.
Let's just see on the bags. I did. Hal, I have a monthly fee for a radio system that says LBM to the sheriff's department. It, that, to me, the-
Where's it from?
Uh, electronic communications. It, we're, that's usually our tower rent, but-
Yeah, I think that's-
An amount is fifteen hundred eighty-five.
I thought the tower rent was lower than that. I thought it was like seven hundred a month.
Has it got more than a month's in there?
Yeah.
Well, it said May, but it, I believe we got two towers.
It is the sheriff. It's the radio system for me.
Is it the regular one, not the new system?
Yeah, it's the monthly service fee for radio systems. So it must be for radios. Let me go ask the gal that she might know if that's their new radio system or our, or-
Mm-hmm.
Well- Or the old one, okay.
I'm not trying to complicate things here, but I just thought the radio towers were seven hundred and something every month.
And just the word that I hear that the new system needs more towers than what we originally have, we only have two, two towers here. And for that to work, I don't know if we realize that, but in order to hit, hit your tower, they're gonna need more towers.
Yeah, that's the, the federal government adjusted the frequency or the wattage that you could use.
Yeah, yeah.
It is for old radio system.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. So it, it doesn't, right, it won't reach as far.
Right. Because it's not as powerful.
You know, yeah.
It's like going from the base phone to your-
Yeah.
-handhold.
Almost, yeah.
If you, if you have the signal, it's great. If you don't?
Don't.
We got another one missing in the bag.
Just grab a couple.
Yeah, yeah. You're getting your steps in today.
That's right.
So I don't know if one of this IT stuff is really locked right now.
Yeah, I'm not sure if they, if they got that in their plan or not, but if they don't, it'll get a bit of a trouble because-
Yeah. It's that one you just grabbed. Yeah.
Here's- Here's our stress.
So this energy tech system was on the HVAC controls. Will that change after we do our upgrades, or?
I believe so, but it won't notice.
Oh, maybe it's pretty easy. Oh, where is that? Where's your, uh, agenda? Sorry, Alice has another question. It looks like we received a check for seventy-three hundred and twenty-two dollars. Uh, there's Tawanda Knutson. It says it closes a state company amount of that amount for deposit. So I don't see that on other business. This is revenue coming in, yes, no? We're sorry to keep bugging you, but-
That's not a problem. Okay, we need to, as a payment for easement for North Dakota Department transportation.
We're paying it to them?
Yes. And it's going through the clerk of court, so that's why when the check is done, we need to give it to her to provide it to them.
Oh.
Okay, does that make sense?
Us give her the check.
Yeah, we give her the check.
Thank you.
Did we just rush on?
Got it.
You gotta talk slow when you talk to me sometimes.
Thought we had a court party yet to peel the shop. I'm like, what happened to the sewer? And then it's in there for crack sealant.
We have a bridge inspection invoice here. I don't see any problem with it, but I would like this to be discussed when we have our roads. Uh, if Charles, Charles comes in, we can ask him. It's got to do with inspections. It's a fee for bridge inspections. I wanna know where we're at on those as part of progress, basically.
So, uh, wait to approve that one, or you just wanna-
No, I'm fine with spending.
We just have questions on it?
Yeah, just to- Give me a, I didn't have time to see him this last week, so I need to see where we're at as far as progress on those bridge inspections. He was going to provide a map of all the bridges and-
Their status, sir.
Status, but the information doesn't come in on a schedule. It's this, this is done, and well, we'll wait a while, we'll go do this, so I have to keep after following up on it, as does he.
So would this be the bridge number, like, uh, number one or the twenty, twenty-one?
I don't know what that designation stands for.
Here, here they got eleven and eleven.
I think those are billing numbers, but I don't know that. So let's just pull that one down. We'll give it to him to approve, but I might ask Travis to hold it.
Okay.
What's, where's that supposed to sit? Like here, or just trying to get them out of order? Does it go on top of this one?
Yes.
So it goes like this?
There we go.
Side ways.
Yeah, we need to know kinda how many of the inspectors here.
We're expecting to get, last I heard, we were trying to get all of them done this year. Some of them are done. We just haven't had reports yet.
Oh.
Do you know what account these, um, like, meal, um, things are for when they were searching for tireless?
No assistant here is officiating the landfill. Four fifty. Is that gonna come out of? They contract diesel for them, for land?
Where's the seniors?
It's supposed to come in on emergency funding.
Okay.
So there should be one for Terry Turner's too.
I never wish it.
Okay.
Okay.
Travis had a question. Uh, we have a landfill for diesel. There's no problem with the bill, but it doesn't appear that we're, have a contract for diesel fuel for the landfill. Do you recall?
Well, it would be any diesel that the, that the county uses. It'd be-
Would be rack price?
Well, whatever they quoted, like sometimes it's, it's a, yeah, it's like the-
It's that date quote for the day, right?
Yeah.
'Cause here's, here's-
Yeah, it's a day here's it.
Well, uh, here's one for four dollars and eight cents.
This one's four fifty.
Is one died and one cleared?
Number two. This is number two.
Doesn't say died or anything?
Nope.
Oh. Well, this one is the county shop, and this one's the landfill. Now I gotta look at the date of trade.
With all the changes in fuel, I mean, the day can mean a lot.
Yep, it can.
Yeah, this is the sixteenth, and this is the twelfth.
There was a big increase in that timeframe, so.
Well.
Depends on when they got their shipment and-
Wow.
Yeah, 'cause-
So, so that's not like propane where they have a, no.
No, a lot of it is. Because propane, they can contract.
I remember, you're right. I recall. We just agreed where we were going to get it, if we could.
Yeah, diesel.
Yeah, correct. And it's, and that's direct, uh, rack price per day.
Right, or their bulk price, whatever, yeah.
Yep, I recall that now. Thanks.
That was cheap. Here, here's one of, yeah, four dollars and eighty cents.
Yeah, I've had to fill my diesel truck twice this month, and I haven't enjoyed it either time. I think it was two hundred and seventeen bucks one time and two hundred and twenty-something the other.
Mine's on retirement.
Yours is on retirement.
I got rid of the diesel cars.
They weren't so bad, were they?
Usually you get pretty good economy with a diesel car.
Yeah.
For years, diesel was cheaper.
Yeah, it was cheaper.
Yeah. Well, it's kinda like our little discussion beforehand when we were talking about how gas and various things were better. Now that they're more refined, it's started having issues. Had to refill your post suits in preparation for the election.
Mm-hmm. I don't have to fill it again.
Yeah. Pick up number one eighty-seven. Had an expensive month. It's not even a month, a couple of weeks, right?
Yes.
It worked.
I can associate it as not.
Yeah. The pay center is finished?
Pay center is finished. I don't know if you sign all of it in the telephone line. I think there's about five vouchers in it. Turn that baby off. I normally don't. Once in a while I need it for adding. My wife had one. She was living alone for years. I knew it was grand over. She said, let's go get you a new phone, you can see. Jimmy Christopher's thirteen or something. I had to have one. It's not that one ever since. Morning.
I'll sign those later. All entertain a motion to approve the bills as presented.
I saw a move to approve the bills as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Motion moved by Marv, seconded by Wayne. Any discussion on the bills? Seeing none. Marv?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. That motion passes. Um, we got a couple of minutes here. Let's, um, do we just wanna do a motion for the signature cards? That shouldn't take too long. So who has to be on that? Alice?
Um, this is Malcolm Milker, auditor, Darby Burger, treasurer, and treasurer of the state legislature.
Okay.
Also move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Wayne. Is there a second?
Aye. I'll second that.
Seconded by Marv. Any discussion? Seeing none. Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
Marv?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. That motion passes. Um, let's do the April recorder fees.
I move to accept the April recording fees of forty-eight hundred and twenty dollars and sixty cents.
Is there a second?
Second that.
Motion by Marv, seconded by Wayne to accept the April recorder fees. Any discussion? Seeing none. Uh, Marv?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
That motion pass, or I vote aye. That motion passes. Skip myself.
Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the April sheriff's fees of ten thousand three thirty-seven point nine three.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second that, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Marv, seconded by Wayne to accept the April sheriff's fees. Any discussion? Seeing none. Marv?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
I'll vote aye. That motion passes. All right. Nine thirty. We got emergency management, management issues. So Carmen committed?
Carmen was wondering if you did, she didn't have anything, so if you do have questions for her or anything, I can call her to here.
Okay.
She didn't have anything to report. So just let me know. I can give her a call if you'd like to discuss.
Any, any questions?
I have nothing prepared. No.
Okay. Oh, okay. Let's go back down to other business. Um, budget calendar? Should be in our pack there, right?
Yeah.
There you go. Okay.
So I guess I can start.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the dates here.
Okay. So June second, the auditor's office will send the budget letters and documents to all the county departments. Um, the budget letters and documents will also be sent to all, say, agencies like the cities, the parks, the, all the other areas, to Library Board. And then on July sixth, the budget requests from each department are due in the auditor's office. They should review their budgets, um, with their portfolio holders prior to submitting them to the auditor. And the department request budget will be closed and copied to the commission preliminary budget. And then on July twentieth, the county commission will review the budgets the department has as needed. On August third, the commissioner approves the preliminary budget. The commission must also approve the time and place for the budget hearing, which must be held between September seventh and October sixth. On August tenth, the preliminary budgets must be filed with the county auditor by all local governments. On August nineteenth, auditor will give the treasurer preliminary mill levies. And on August thirty-first, treasurer must mail him estimated tax statements. September seventh is the earliest date local governments may hold their budget hearing. And on October fifth, Worcester County Farm was hearing their budget at ten thirty a.m., which is ten about this time.
So the October fifth? Is that, yeah, a formal hearing, but so the sixth is the last day that we'd have to submit that to, to the state?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I am working on their budget worksheets right now, so they have a past three years in what they are to date as of twenty twenty-two.
Okay. Any questions?
Uh, for discussion, I move to approve the budget calendar as presented.
Okay, motion by Marv to approve the budget calendar as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Wayne. Any discussion?
Just want to put it out there that this is a, is a calendar, and we can amend and change and work with it as needed. So this is a, a good roadmap. But there's always opportunity to schedule meetings if we have conflicts. That's all I have.
Got kind of one question or comment. I noticed, like, say, last year, a lot of the sub, sub-political, uh, divi-, uh, departments really didn't come in, and, uh, I guess the commissioners didn't request it. But I think it's always personally myself nice to hear from them subdivisions like the, you know, the airport, the weed, the social ser-, or the historical society, the ambulance, just, just to know where they're going in the future and, and, uh, otherwise, uh, I don't know, it seems like we have a little bit of disconnect, I think, then. What do you think, Marv?
Totally agree with you completely. Open discussion and communication, you can't get enough of it, so I agree.
I, I mean, I always enjoyed to hear from them folks. I mean, there's lots of subdivisions that come, and just to, uh, I think it's important for the board, so the board knows who they are, and they know who the board is. I know last year, we kinda didn't do those, but I, I think it's kinda key important, so just something to think about and-
So they can tell us if it's like equipment related or-
Right, or, or what, you know, what they see going towards the future too, or the problems that they're incorporating, and, uh, it's just, like you said, it's more of a communication between the board and that subdivision and-
Or the department heads.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none. Marv?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
And I'll vote aye. We have approved budget calendar. Uh, twenty twenty-three salaries. I'm assuming you need like a dollar amount or a percentage or something just for the budget. We usually do three. Or that's kinda what we've done in- We usually do three, or, that's kind of what we've done in the past.
Just the kind of direction where the auditor should kinda see where, maybe see what, two percent would cost, two percent, four percent? What your guys' ideas of what you think for salary increases for how much?
Fellow board members, determining what the salaries recommendations are without sitting down and going through where we're at today on our budget, and what our expected revenues and expenses are going to be at the end of the year is really hard to do, but, we need to do something, I think. But, it's hard to do. We did a, a three percent last year, and what I would recommend, we provide at least two, possibly three choices, that they can put in there so we can, uh, measure what it might cost us. But I would really recommend a dollar value versus a percentage value, this time. Uh, we need to keep in mind that, for every dollar that we spend, there's a quite large percentage added to that. That's our cost and, and benefits, which is, which are necessary also, but we just need to be cognizant of that. So the first recommendation I'm going to have is that we have a one dollar, we look at the cost of one dollar. And let somebody else make their other recommendations.
Because I think last year we did a fifty cent, a seventy-five, and then a percentage, if I remember right.
Yeah, and it came back later though, and it didn't have all those in there, it just had, let's do this one.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Are you, are we allowed to make a comment on that issue?
Well, I guess we can, you know, typically not, but what's, what's the comment?
My name is Darwin Knudson, and I just have a question.
If you come up front here.
Tell me, keep it short.
My name is Darwin Knudson, and you all know my wife Juana, she's over here in the district clerk, of course, been here a long time, so, county business is our kitchen table business, every day. And now, the suggestion I was going to bring up in a future meeting here, is that, uh, we look at a, instead of a, a percentage increase, we look at a flat sum type of a, uh, a, uh, yearly, uh, bonus situation, to alleviate the long-term liabilities of the, uh, wage percentages, uh, separating between the upper income people here and the lower income people, and also, uh, that takes down the, uh, the, uh, long-term liabilities for the, uh, of the benefit program, of course. Now, in the past, uh, they, they did institute a program here, and I don't know if Wayne was here, Wayne Entzy was here at the time, but, they were doing a percentage, and then the next year they were doing a flat rate, without the percentage, like, uh, they do a percentage, next year they come in and give them a flat dollar amount. So, I just asked, he may consider something like that, because, uh, if you all haven't realized, uh, we got some politicians put a foreclosure sign on our industries here, and they're going with the Green New Deal. And we got a powerhouse out here scheduled to close in four years possibly. So, uh, we gotta look at, you know, trimming the budget, so that's my comment.
Uh, thanks, the, the comment on the, uh, I guess, the bonus thing, that structure doesn't really fit well with political subdivisions. It's, you know, kind of frowned upon. I'm not saying it's not doable, but it's, it's not something that typically happens in, um, political, and this is, basically, we're looking at a budget, and I, I know last year we talked about inflation, this year is even worse than the previous year, so.
Previous year, yeah.
Um, but we can make, um, changes to, um, because you're sending out documents, so, like, for your calculations, Alice, I'm assuming they won't be until after our next meeting in June. So, we kind of have one recommendation of a dollar.
Which was a flat rate?
Which was a flat rate, um, but, I'd like to hear from Eliza and Gene before we do anything formally. I'm comfortable with a dollar as far as the preliminary budget goes, but, um. Wayne, do you have any comments on?
Well, it, it's a starting point, and, uh, and, yeah, I, this year we probably would go with a hundred dollar amount, because I think we've had percentages, uh, for the last few years, and, and all of a sudden, uh, it's just that time to adjust to maybe a, a straight dollar type thing.
Okay.
So.
So, should we have that put back on?
I think so.
Agenda for the next meeting?
Sure.
Okay. All right. Um, library board appointment. Did we just get one? Okay. And that's a different Alice, it's not you? Any questions or comments from the board?
Question to the audience, uh, people, is Alice here?
No.
Okay, okay, that, understood that. Well, we need, we need some people on the board, and we had one applicant, and I move to approve the appointment of Alice Hubel to the library board.
Okay, motion by Marv, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Wayne, any discussion? How long does that term last, do you know? It's an unexpired term, so. I, I think the full one is three, but.
Is this, is this a non-expired?
Yeah, yeah, this is non-expired.
Okay.
So, um, I guess, uh, we'll make it, well, we'll, if we do the appointment, we'll do it for the term of the unexpireds, and, um, we'll have that listed. Any other discussion?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Seeing no further discussion, Marv?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
All vote aye. Alice is hereby appointed to the library board. Um, water resource board, um, Bill Kirk, um, who's been on the water resource board for numerous years, he is moving outside the county, um, so he is making his resignation effective the end of May. Um, so, I guess I would entertain a motion to accept his resignation from the water resource board.
Mr. Chairman, I make that a dual motion. I move to accept the resignation of Bill Kirk, and also that we note, put applicant, app, notice out that we need another person.
Okay, motion by Marv to accept Bill Kirk's resignation and post for a replacement on that board, is there a second?
Second that.
Second by Wayne, any discussion?
Yeah, unfortunately, uh, we want to thank Bill for his years of service, the man has a lot of knowledge, and we regretfully, uh, see him go, because, but, uh, anyhow, we'll just have to advertise for, uh, new candidate, and, and.
Yeah, I want to echo what Wayne said, uh, if you don't know Bill Kirk, he, uh, was an engineer for North American Coal for over thirty-five years, and his specialty was water resources and drainage, um, so.
Yeah.
He was licensed in multiple states and provided those services, and actually taught classes on water resources, so, he's going to be a huge, huge, um, vacancy in that board. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Marv?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes. All right, was Todd coming in today, do you know? He's not? Okay. Um, seven nine forty-four, we could talk about the open records request.
Oh, she was, oh, she's here, okay.
Open meeting requests, so, I think, um, everybody got the email from Darby, and then, um, what Todd had responded to. So, I, I believe this goes through the auditor's office, as far as how this is handled. Questions, comments, Marv, you kind of had a question, or did you just?
I'm a little bit confused, basically, and I wish Todd was here to straighten out my confusion. As I understand, open records requests are just that, all the records in our courthouse are subject to open records laws, and if you require, request them, they're supposed to be provided. If they cannot be provided at that time, you're actually supposed to receive a letter stating why you can not, why you would not be able to provide them at that time. Why this has to come before the board, that's where my confusion lies. Uh, Todd says this is a, this is an action the commission that needs discussing, in open forum. I'm not sure what that would be, uh, my information with open records is that they are to be provided. And, uh, I guess, uh, the applicant for these open records might want to have something to say to.
Yep, Darby, come up.
It is just a request for the records that I indicated. But if you guys read your policy manual, you had five days to give them to me, which you are now passed. So we're not following our policy manual again, or our policies.
Okay.
And I guess too, I'm confused as to why it's here, I don't think anybody else who has records request has been here before the commission to get them. I'm not asking for them.
Yeah, um, and like I said.
And I guess I'm confused why, uh, that, um, interviews are not out on the web. Was that meeting not recorded? They've always been recorded.
Shannon has said, before she said that they have never put interviews on, on the web.
I guess you could ask Cindy about that.
I don't know if my interview was on the web, I just.
Todd's wasn't on their website, um, Shannon's wasn't on the website.
Okay, I'm wrong about that, I guess.
I guess from, from where I sit, with the understanding that I have, these records need to be provided.
And the only exception to those would be if it was information that's sensitive, like, uh, social security number, or certain things like that.
I don't believe that's on any.
No, I know, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm just stating the fact that if, if those were on any of the, um, applications, those would have to be removed.
They can redact that part, but supply the petitioner with her information.
Okay. Any questions, Wayne, there?
No, I, I'm fine.
Okay. Um, so I guess we'll direct the auditor's office to provide, um, the requests, um, and most of us are kind of confused why it's here anyway, but, I wish Todd was here to explain, um, his email, but, seeing no further comment. Um, whatever information can be provided to Darby based on the temporar- temporary auditor position, um, please provide those to Darby.
Thank you.
Thanks, Darby.
Yep.
Nine forty-eight. Um, what do we got on the wind ordinance hearing petition?
I think we can do that in ten minutes. Find my paper.
Is that this one?
Yes. Okay. And, we just, Alice ran you copies, it looks like this, you're going to see the little crimp in the corner?
Right.
What was sent in our packet was missing some pages, so she re-copied this, and it's not green, the highlighted parts, they're now just shaded in. Okay, I sent in a per eleven twenty, eleven thirty-three-ten. It says, uh, any person aggrieved by any provision of a resolution has thirty days to submit an application, which I did. And, as I here understand this, and Alice can help me out here, or anybody can, he has it highlighted, uh, here, and this came from, I believe it came from Todd, but it might have came from the auditor. A hearing shall be held no sooner than seven days, nor later than thirty days, so basically, from what I understand, we need to schedule this for a hearing at our next meeting, and prior to that, I think it has to be posted again in the paper, twice.
Twice, or just once?
I think twice, well, it's stated in here, but I would have to go back and find that.
The only reason I ask that, because if we posted this week, it wouldn't be in there twice before our next meeting.
Actually, if you read eleven thirty-three oh nine, it, eleven, eleven thirty-three oh nine supersedes eleven thirty-three-ten. Eleven thirty-three-ten says, you have to file a petition for amendment, within a certain time. And then the last part of eleven thirty-three oh nine says, if a petition for a separate hearing is filed, per eleven-ten, shall not take effect until the board of commissioners has affirmed such resolution or amendment in accordance with the procedures, la la la, so anyhow. It, I don't know how to say this, because I don't believe it's required that it, because it has to be posted.
Yeah, because, I mean, just looking at the time.
I've noticed in oh-nine, it does say, you know, that third sentence in oh-nine, immediately not going to be adoption.
We did that already.
That's, that's a practice.
Yeah, we've done that.
I, I guess looking at this, you know, if it says within thirty days, a, a two-week publication would be difficult, you know, prior to us talking about it, because if it's no sooner than seven, and it has to be done before thirty, I think we put it on our next meeting at a set time, and we hold it unless we hear otherwise, and that meeting, we would be. Yeah, it'd be June first, I'm just.
We have to do it within that time period.
That time period, so, I think we publicize it, and we put it on the agenda for next meeting.
Will we publicize it, Alice, as, as often as we can? Maybe put it on the website? Do we need a motion of that effect? I don't think so, we're just following the ordinance.
I think we should set a time, though, uh, for the, for the hearing.
Yes.
I think we usually do ten thirty for planning and zoning type things.
Equalization is at ten thirty?
Oh, equalization's at ten thirty? Um, maybe we should do it at eleven?
I agree.
Okay.
I move to hold a public hearing on our petition for amendment on our wind ordinance at eleven AM, June one.
Okay, motion by Marv to have the hearing at eleven AM on June first, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Wayne, any further discussion? Seeing none, Marv?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
And all vote aye, that motion passes.
Tried to put as many words as I could, Alice, keep.
All right.
Thank you.
Um, the election of worker compensation?
Um, yes, last meeting, we did approve the election letters, though we did not approve their, what we will be paying them that day, for their time that they put in for the election. Uh, we are suggesting fifteen dollars per hour, for election, for all the election workers, that's mail-in, uh, early vote, and then the day of the election. And that is included in our election budget.
It's in your budget? What did we do prior, was it thirteen or fifteen, twelve? Okay. And how many hours is the election polling place open?
Um, that is open from nine to seven, but of course, that, you know, you start earlier and end later, you just don't close up in the pool.
Right, yeah, usually it's until ten thirty, eleven o'clock, by the time it gets.
If you're lucky.
If you're lucky.
Yeah, we're going to be lucky this year.
Sure, you are, no.
And how many, how many do you usually try to get for that?
Um, there's two clerks, two judges, so there's about six people, the day of voting, and then there's about six people for early voting the week before, and then the mail-in ballots is about the same too.
And then do we do anything for the canvassing board?
I don't believe so, they're just the election workers.
Okay. Uh, I'll entertain a motion for the compensation of the election workers.
I'll so move that we compensate them at fifteen dollars an hour.
Okay, motion by Wayne, is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Seconded by Marv, and a discussion?
Just curiosity question, what have we paid in the past?
Uh, last time, last election, it was twelve dollars.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
Marv?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes. Um, before we move on from that, the canvassing board, is that something we have to appoint, or how's it?
Yeah, I think we do, right?
Yeah, and we'd have to do that probably at the next meeting, because you'd have to have that in place, because the fourteenth would be for the second meeting, so.
Put that on the agenda.
Can you put that on the agenda?
We don't forget.
If we don't want to forget that, yes.
Yeah, it'd be not good.
Okay. Nine fifty-five. Well, should we start with? Well, should we start with Ken, or do we wait a few minutes?
Let's do a portfolio, maybe.
Portfolio? Okay, Marv, you got any portfolio updates?
Just a few, I attended Custer Health quarterly meeting. They do something that I really hope that we could emulate, and that's called a strategic plan, so they can sketch, plan where they want to be. Every so often, like one year, two year, five year down the road, I've suggested this when I was, first became a commissioner, and hasn't found fruit yet, but I'm hoping that we look at that. They do a very, very good job, and they do this periodically, where a company comes in and does it, I'm not saying we need to have a company, but their reports are very, very clear and wide open. I did also visit with Ken Miller, and we'll talk more about my visit with him when we get to the road department, that's where we put that. I have a letter that I provided all of you guys, and we'll talk about that at that point. We had a complaint on a road repair, and I did go visit that individual, and there'll be some more talk about that by that individual, so we'll just table that, so that's all I have for my portfolio at this time.
Okay. The, my portfolios, the Fairport's been meeting pretty much every other week, they got their entertainment lined up. They're actually looking at putting in a new hoop barn is the, is the term they're using, so they're going through the applications through the city for permitting on that, and they're getting funding from one of the local banks. I wasn't at the last library board meeting, because they had a work conflict, so I don't have a report on that. Water resource board, we covered a little bit on that with Bill's resignation, but they got all their stuff submitted for their, I think it's biannual. Budgeting requests to the state. So that's in, I haven't heard anything on that yet, and I believe that's all I have for updates, Wayne?
Okay, mine's pretty short and sweet, I, we had regional airport meeting, we have punch list that needs to be taken care of, some erosion problems and those types of things. And the lead board met the other evening, but I was not able to attend, and that's about all I got for now.
Okay. Well, as Charlie and Ken make their way up, if anybody hasn't signed in, could you pass that around, make sure we have a list of everybody that's here? What was this for?
Oh, that was.
Do I have to sign it?
Yes, you do. That was for the recorder's fees.
Recorder's, okay. So does it go, where do I sign?
I'll send both of these. You have to ask her.
You just sign on the box.
Just anywhere here?
That's the other recorder fee, or sheriff's fees.
All right. What do we got, guys?
First one is Gail Hoots, and with Mercer slash Dunn County section line, I think they are here.
Okay.
Come up.
If you guys want to come up over here, if you don't mind?
Because we're being, because we're being recorded, please state your name.
Rick Hoots.
Gail Hoots.
Hi.
Good morning. Ken, if you can give us a little rundown on what the.
Couple weeks ago, they had called the office and seen if they could get some gravel on there, it's the east-west stretch, it's, it's on the, Dunn County is to the west of them. Anyway, it's, it's an unimproved road, it's a section line road. The north-south stretch, Dunn County, like I say, we share that with its border, but the north-south stretch is taken care of by Dunn County on that stretch. But I'm pretty sure you guys were talking about the east-west stretch by your house, and I can, this was a picture I took the other day. This is looking off of that north-south stretch of that Dunn County slash Mercer County line, and you could see their farmstead there to the south, on the right side there. And the blade operator over in that area, I think it was, it was either early this week or last week, had, went over there and bladed that, brought what material on the sides that he could, and you can see on the, it's a picture that, you can see where he cut on the side there to bring that in, and there's, I mean, there's gravel on that road. The only, you know, it's, it's a section line, there, there's no ditch there, you can see it on the picture. It's not an improved road, it's not a road that we take care of. So I had said, if they want gravel on there, it would be at their cost, and that's why they are here, because they feel that it shouldn't be at their cost, is I'm assuming, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so.
So this is actually the county line?
No, this is our, the east-west stretch of Mercer County, to the east of the Mercer County slash Dunn County north-south stretch.
Yeah, I was just wondering, in case we had any joint jurisdiction or anything, just wanted to make sure we, whatever we're talking.
So it's an unimproved section line?
Yes.
That they're using for a private road?
Well, for their residents, yes.
But other people, can I talk?
Yep, go ahead.
Absolutely.
My, you know, other people use that road, when you, I'm terrible with directions, but I think beyond east of us is that bridge that they didn't want to redo or whatever, which is fine, but people still, other than us, if it was just our road, probably would be okay with doing that. But I, in fact, a guy just drove down the road this morning, and I didn't get a picture in time, but, you know, people go to the cemetery on that road. The UPS guy leaves my driveway, goes, you know, the opposite way, so it's not, it's not necessarily just our road. And my husband can explain more, but I guess my question was, I think our taxes are, I don't know, anywhere from eighteen hundred to twenty-two hundred a year. And like I had explained to Ken, you know, we're not asking for the road to be rebuilt, my husband's out there scraping it and packing it all the time with our side-by-side and a thing that he rigged up. We're just asking for a little bit of surface. The only thing that's been done by the county since we've been there two years this last November is they mowed the, the sides of the roads, or the road ditches once, and so.
I'd like to correct that twice.
Twice, okay. So I guess if it was, if we were the only one using it, you know, I probably could accept being the one that surfaces it, but all we're asking for is a little bit of gravel. And my husband does the snow removal, everything, so I'm done.
Okay, if I could address the commission. Gary Katamis had a gravel pit developed on his property, which is why that road is surfaced now. The development company or the gravel company surfaced that road, and I realize, Ken, that it's, it's listed as an unimproved road, and it is. I have no problem, I don't expect the county to improve the road, or build up the road, or anything else. What I would like to see is a little bit of surfacing provided from the county, so that we can, as our neighborhood, take care of it. Mr. Gary Katamis uses that on his tax base. Mr. Gordon Sirmax has a house section that, off that road, that's on that tax base. Glenn Patterson uses that road, it's on that, there's four of us right there on that half-mile paying taxes on that road. And I'm not asking the county to come and blade it, I'm not asking the county to do anything for snow removal, all's I would like is the county to provide a little surfacing.
What do I think?
What do you think, Wayne? Or what, what, I guess, we have the most history of anybody up here, so what we've done in the past?
It, basically, that section line is a through section line, then, it is, it's not a dead-end section line, like you said, people go over to the cemetery, in other words, and, I don't know, is it, eventually, does it go over to that Wilson place?
Yes, but there's a, there's a crossing in there, I think it's nine ton is all.
Fifteen ton.
Yeah, or fifteen ton, it ain't much.
It's inspected by the state every, every year.
Right, but.
And it is from, from my, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, from my property, which is a half-mile in from the west to the east, from the east on is two trap road. It's not something that somebody's gonna go down in the rain, if they do, they're in trouble. It's gravelled up to the cemetery from Mr. Wilson's, and it's gravelled from the county line to my property line. And it's not gravelled by the county at this time on my half-mile. And that's what my request would be, is that everybody's paying a lot of taxes, and I know that everything's high, but it's high for us, too, it's high for us to live out there. But I'm more than happy to pay my taxes.
And there was a comment made that we chose to move there, and we did, but that enhances the county, you know, it's no longer just twelve acres of nothing. You know, we've added value by building, and if you all want to drive by there, we worked very hard to, to make it a very nice place, and so.
I encourage everybody coming along, take a look, have a cup of coffee.
Ken, did you have anything else?
Well, you know.
You were in the middle of something.
Question I have is, you know, in our road policy, it says number five, it says Mercer County has no obligation to open new roads or upgrade and maintain section lines for public travel. Okay? And Cindy's here, and she has that, what do they call that, Cindy, where they, they have to sign that thing saying, and it said Rough Rider, they have to, I mean, they know that going into that, it's not an improved road, there's no ditches on that road, okay? It's a section line. So my question and my concern is, I have limited amount of gravel supplies, okay? Now, what's to say they live a half-mile, what happens if someone buys a place two miles in, is the county gonna play, or is it gonna put gravel on that, two miles? What's the difference? What happens if it's three miles in? Century code states that it's up to the individual to develop or improve that section line. That's my concern, because sooner or later, if it's a quarter mile off, if it's a couple hundred yards off, what's the difference between that and two, three miles down a section line? And we have that in Mercer County, where people have property further back, but at what point do we say, no, I mean, that's my concern? And like, snow removal on this, too, with the, there's no, like I say, no ditches, it's a east-west, there's snow traps on that north side, because the back slopes are higher than the road is, so. I'm just.
Gail and Mrs. Hoots, I can't help but hear the need and the want. I also live in the country, and I had to build my own road. And in this instance, because we have a policy, and I'm going to support what Ken just said, that we, that we need to follow our policy. If we start deviating and setting variances for one individual, it just never seems, it's like a snowball, it just keeps going down the road. So I have to just say, in all honesty, as hard as it is to say, and it is not comfortable, I agree with Ken, we should not.
So is it our response, if, if there's other people paying tax also, I mean, is it, you know, there again, we're not the only one using the road?
I understand that, that's between you and the other ones using the road, if they want to bring it in. I'll even go a little bit farther than what Ken said. Gravel, right now, is an extremely rare commodity, and it's very hard to get, it's very expensive, it's hard to keep. And I'm not sure where we're gonna be in just a short period of time down the road to even have gravel for our county roads. So going and even selling it to private individuals, we're not supposed to be a retailer, but I believe we can't even provide you gravel unless you pay for it. So I'm gonna agree with Ken, we have a policy, and there's a reason that we developed it, and it's not a fun policy to enforce, but I think, in my opinion, we should.
And as you can see on that road, when he's delivering what he put on the side, there is gravel on that road, you know, after he brought that in. But the thing of it is, if you don't, if you don't have ditches there, how's that water gonna get off that road? You can't even, it's flat, so it, every time they drive on it, it's gonna get, you're gonna get potholes, you know, I mean, until that road's built to a county-spec road, and even at that point, it depends if the county wants to take that over as a road, too. I mean, but there's gravel on that road, there's surface material on there.
It is, it is a crowned road, albeit minimal, there is no noticeable ditch, but it, it will drain water. I guess if, if that is the policy, that's the policy, but I would like to request then that I could buy gravel from the county at cost and have the county haul it for me.
Yeah, our taxes, I mean, what are we getting for our tax money? If, if they're not doing anything, then, I mean, we're building it up to have a tremendous amount of value, and yet, we're not getting that, so our taxes are assessed on that, and we're not getting anything for it.
Gail, you got it?
Cindy's got a question. Cindy, if you, one might come up.
Can I add that, I'm looking around the room in here, I see two people who live in Stanton, and I know for a fact that they are paying an outrageous amount for just getting their, their roads paved, and every one of us driving here every day into this town, and they had to pay to get the things re, re, the streets repaid, and we all drive on it every day to get to work. I mean, they don't have a choice, we all drive on it, they had to pay for it. And I'm looking at, your guys' taxes right now, and most of your taxes go to the school, or to the county, very little of it goes to the road. So if that's where your taxes go, is to the school taxes and to the county taxes to pay for the rest of the county, I'm not saying that life is fair, but life isn't, and, I mean, a hundred and fifteen dollars of your taxes goes to the unmarked road. Terry and Ashley don't have a choice, and we're strapping on their road, they're paying an outrageous amount for their streets to get them paid.
Marv, did you have a question?
Ken, I'm gonna put you on the spot, I know we visited about it, but I guess I wanted to air it out loud. How critical are, are, are gravel supplies, and what's your opinion as far as selling gravel to private individuals? I know there's a, there's a retail deal law, but help me out there.
Well, Rick had made the mention about if he's willing to buy it, we've done that in the past, too, okay? Whether it's on a section line, in the past, we used to actually sell it for private, too, actually on private drives, years ago, okay? And I cut that out for the simple fact that it is a scarce commodity. In fact, we used to do, there's been a few roads on section lines where they improve it, and they buy the material, and we lay it down with the blade, at no charge. That's, because it's on a section line, okay? And like they said, public travel, but that's for anyone to travel, and we've done that in the past, if they're willing to pay for it, that's what we've done. I mean, I don't see it taking too many loads, I'd like to see, there's gravel on it, but.
Gravel three, four loads is all it would take.
So if they're willing to pay for it, but back to, I mean, eventually, we have that gravel pile down on County Thirty-one on Joe Feger's place, and when that's gone, I've, we've served, we have one more area we can look up north of Hazen, but after that, we're either gonna have to rail gravel in, or bring it in from Riverdale, and we know how Riverdale gravel is. It's marbles, because it washboards, go to County Seventeen, go up to Blue Water Ridge, go north to Eighteen-O-Six, it's marbles, it rolls, it doesn't, there's no fractured faces on it. So that's what we're up against, when that pile's gone, and there's about sixty thousand ton there, it's gone. We found gravel in the county, but there's, it takes such, such a large surface area, it's not even feasible to go in there and do it, it may have to be, because, but when you only got eight footer, or not eight foot, probably a twelve-inch seam of gravel over a big surface area, you got overburden on it, it's, it's gonna cost a lot of money. So we gotta be, that's why I'm with, with gravel, we, we buy our scoria, we can't even get a scoria pit anymore, because private people have come in, so we have to buy that privately, the scoria. So, and we have to haul it ourselves into the shop there. But.
How long will that gravel stay on the road if it's not ground properly?
With the minimal traffic on there, as long as it's not thrown in the ditch, I think it'd be all right, I mean.
Yeah, I need a recommendation from the board. How to proceed?
Well, for discussion, I'll make a motion that we sell them gravel. I think we've already set a precedent that we've done it, well, I'll just make that motion, so we'll have discussion later.
Okay.
The move is that we supply them gravel, and they pay for the gravel.
Okay, motion by Marv to sell gravel to the Hoots, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Wayne, discussion?
Yes, there is. Yes, there is. Um. We've already set a precedent for selling gravel. So therefore that's why I made the motion. And I'll, I'll support, I'll back that up. I do want the board to be aware that maybe I'm in error doing this, but that's the choice that I'm gonna make today. We really need to watch our gravel commodity for the whole county. But that's my only comment.
Any other discussion?
I'm good.
Good. Okay. Proceed to vote. Marv?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. That motion passes. We'll get you some gravel. Thank you.
Yep. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you guys.
You betcha. Unless we, well, I guess.
Ken?
Yes.
What do you got next?
Uh, next is, uh, Darwin Knudsen, County Route eighteen. Little history on that. A couple of weeks ago, I think it was, we had, uh, the operator over there, he's been doing that. All of our operators, wherever we can pull shoulders, we've been trying to pull shoulders in and that means knocking off that curb and gutter on the outside. And it's a spring of the year thing because the grass is dead. We're trying to break, uh, break off that curb and gutter to bring that in. And when the guy brings it in, it's loose material. Would it be nice to have a water truck to do this? Well, we would go broke trying to get a water truck in and doing the amount of roads that we have to do. Well, I think it was last week, one of the way we had a bunch of rain and we had, while we had rain, um, it got soft and it, because it's loose material. It's gonna pick up that rain or that, well, pick up the rain and act like a giant sponge. And when you get traffic on it, even light wheel traffic, it's gonna be slimy. So, and that's what happened. But after the fact, uh, went over there with the road groomer and the, and the blade, brought it back up, ran over it. It packed in there pretty good. Uh, and then we had that rain last week. I think it was about Thursday night going into Friday. And it was a little bit snotty then and he worked it this week and it's, I mean, I got pictures here. This is by, uh, Tracy's, uh, Hoerts's, um, oh, by that center pivot. Find the picture here. But, you know, I think Darwin's here if he's got, like I say, it, that's what happens when you pull shoulders. The guy hates to do it and you're gonna have a couple of slimy days if, if we do get rain. But that water has to run off that road. If there's a curb and gutter out there and the road's flat, we're not gonna get no runoff on that road. And we try to get a four, for sure a four, sometimes a five percent slope because with a gravel road, you're, it's gonna push down. I mean, you're gonna be down to a three percent slope, but in no time. So.
Yeah, Mr., Mr. Commissioners, uh, my name is Darwin Knudsen and I do live out on eighteen there. And, uh, I have no disagreement with what, uh, this man says, except for the fact that it wasn't just a little bit of loose material. Now, I've been out there and I'm just a curious individual. So when they bring this new machine across the road there, I walked out and looked at it. And we had ten, eleven inches of fluffy clay, sand, dirt, a little bit of pea gravel. And this was dry when it was dry. Now it is, the, the boys, they do their job. I got a good road grade operator out there and I want him back. He's a good, he's a good operator. He does a darn good job and, but he, he, he does with what he has to work with. And my first thought when he come by that day, I was out working on my greenhouse and, uh, he come by and my first thought was, well, it should be nice if you got a little gravel sweep back and forth with his job there and make it easier on him. Well, then he come pulling this machine back. So I'm just a curious individual. I walk out there to see what it's doing. I've then been on the working end of a shovel for a time or two, so I understand a little bit about, about roadwork and construction. So, uh, but we had this fluff pile there and we had a single lane in the middle now. And I done waved down there. This foreman showed up down there and I waved and I hollered. They thought I was just a crazy guy, I suppose, but, but, uh, they took off at three thirty there. And, and so then later on, we had to drive that road and I had to engage my four-wheel drive pickup to get up and down it when it was dry. Okay? It was treacherous when it got wet. And I ain't gonna put the burden on them poor old boys in, in that equipment because they're just doing their job. But there was a little lack of oversight there and I just here to make sure it doesn't happen again because it was a real safety concern when that rain hit. Because these little cars, my wife, she just got a little car with a front wheel drive and it was hydroplaning on that mud slick back and forth, excuse me, back and forth. And, uh, she come home real frightened. My neighbors, I watched their one tonners with their horse trailers doing the same thing. It wasn't a pretty sight. Now I got on the phone when it was dry and I called our, our, uh, our chairman here, Mr. Gene Wolf, and nothing happened. Well, then the rain come in here and I got, I called him again. He hung the phone up on me and all I told him was I'd called the sheriff's department over here and asked them to get someone out there and inform everybody going on that road that it was only four-wheel drive only until they got a warning sign out there. That didn't happen. Our lives were put at risk. There is no way, easy way to put at it. And I don't want to put the load on those poor boys, but it was not right. Okay? Now, yes, they got it fixed up and it, it looks fine. We even actually got a little gravel now. They scooped up out of there. But we could use probably a quarter inch more gravel on there, just a little coating to help, help matters. Because I pulled people out of that S corner down, down about a mile and a half, mile three quarters, uh, west of thirty-seven on eighteen there. Because it was just a little snot, a little rain. It gets so slick on there. These little cars slow down and they just slide in the ditch. They got poor tires and all this and that, but still it's just something that needs to be considered. So it's a safety factor that I didn't get no response from our chairman, Gene Wolf. I didn't get no response from our, our sheriff department when I called in them and, and this was a deadly situation. I'm not exaggerating one bit. We weren't even, we weren't even able to get out and go spend our, our mother's day's dinner with our mothers that Sunday because we would have had been endangering ourselves and wrecking our equipment. It was that bad. It's good now and I'm, I'm just here to sound alarm that I don't want to see that again. I don't want to see nobody get hurt. So I'm just asking them that maybe they make a consideration of, that they're gonna do that depth of a, a road repair. Maybe put a little warning sign up there. Some people are aware of what's going on, you know? Uh, it, it's good and, and I'm happy, but, uh, it's the response that I, I got that really puzzled the hell out of me. Excuse my language. It, it just wasn't right. It, it could have saved a lot of headache for some people because my little neighbor there, gal there, she pulling them big old horses. Now she ain't scared of nothing. But she was a little frightened on that road and rightly so. So I'd look, would like to make a request that there be maybe a little quarter inch of gravel spread on there to help matters out. And that road will be good for a decade. And then, uh, the other, the other request is that we do have a, a navigating corners and they ask curves down there on that two and a half mile stretch there going from thirty-seven out there to the T where you turn on and go out to two hundred. And I would like to request, because we got, uh, one, two, three of us and we ain't barely two hundred feet off of that, that gravel road. And then we eat this dust constantly, you know, we, we live in the country. We understand that. But if we could get a thirty mile an hour speed limit for that two and a half miles and I already talked to my neighbors there and they've sure got no objection to that. And I'd like you all to take a look at that and see what, like your road superintendent thinks, but I think it would be a wise, wise choice. And then just, uh, you know, don't come down on them old boys, Kenny. Just, just, uh, make sure it don't happen again, you know? Put in the procedures. I just, I'm just an assumption type of a guy. I figured that them boys could run around with their gr, road graders and they got us a checklist so they can keep track of what's going on on them roads and they make suggestions, you know? Maybe that's an idea that they could make use of. I know they do their PMs, do a PM on the roads they maintain. So anyway, I just want to thank you all for, for what they did do, come out, clean that up. And I want to thank Mr. Marvin Schrader here for running to the far. Now, Mr. Wolf, he done just hung up the phone, didn't want to do nothing with it. This old boy come all the way out, drove all night from Minneapolis there. He was there the next morning all fatigued with his road leg and everything, come out to hear the history and get the facts of the matters I saw. And I'm not exaggerating because this old boy, he just uses simple tools. I drilled my twenty-four foot two by four out there and my tape measure, my level. And I measured five different spots in a hundred yard area. And I measured thirteen to seventeen inches down off of them two by fours when this roadbed of fluff was sitting there. And it done had a pitch put on there, something I see on the top of my roof. So I'm just, just wanna voice my, my concerns that maybe we just need to be a little more cautious when we're doing this type of stuff. And maybe there needs to be a little more observation about what going on because I've done, been a foreman a time or two. And if you ain't on top of the situation, especially with new machinery, it slides back on you in a hurry. So I just want to thank you all for hearing me and taking care of the problem. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Darwin. Okay, Ken, you got some utility permits?
Uh, yeah, Rough Rider, your utility permit seventeen thirty-nine. It is up there on county thirty-seven, county eighteen. It's, uh, for, uh, they want to bore underneath the road, uh, at that intersection. It'd be, uh, the park service, I think, is on the northeast side there and they want to go to the southwest. And that's, uh, by, I think Joe Ritterath has that corner, uh, northeast corner.
Okay. Questions, comments?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll move to, uh, issue a utility permit for seventeen thirty-nine, boring under.
The rule of. County thirty-seven.
County road thirty-seven.
Motion by Wayne? Seconded by Marv. Any discussion on utility permit? Seeing none. Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
Marv?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. That motion passes.
Next one is seventeen forty. This is also for Rough Rider. It's three crossings up, uh, like, uh, it's on Catoa properties. But, I mean, we still have the section lines there, but they're crossing at three locations with, uh, with their power. So.
Do they conduit any of that or is it just a, a bore and they just drop the line in?
They usually just bore it.
Yeah, bored.
Sometimes we get a lot of casing too, but it depends, but not, not powered usually. And on there, I mean, we always have that too where they have to put the back slopes to market, but, I mean, it's on, eventually it's gonna have to when that, if it ever goes away, you know, to re, get reclaimed. I mean, that should be there. I don't know what, I don't know what they're actually putting power to. I don't know. I don't, that's not mine, but they're crossing our section line. They have to get permission from you guys.
This is just a general, as it wasn't really pertaining to this. I was just wondering if, if we ever cased any power or anything like that. Want to entertain a motion for seventeen forty?
A second, I mean, I still move to accept permit seventeen forty.
Motion by Marv. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Wayne. Any discussion? Seeing none. Marv?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. That motion passes.
Uh, next one is seventeen forty-one. It's, uh, Brian DeShock from Zap. He wants to run, uh, Southwest Water to, he's got some property on the south side of county twenty and he wants to go underneath county twenty to get Southwest Water over to that property.
Okay.
They gonna bore that or they gonna dig? Bore. That's gotta be bored. Yep. Okay. I don't, he hasn't said who's doing it yet, but they'll have to get ahold of us. Okay.
Question, Ken. Rough Rider Electric, now they're doing permits for individuals, but they, they're the ones that apply to do the boring. Brian DeShock is doing it. I'm just curious, why isn't Southwest Water?
Southwest Water, it's always, it's been the individual that does it for Southwest Water.
It's just different.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Western Telephone is kind of the same way, even though, I mean, like Rough Rider, they do it. They're the ones that apply for the permit. Yes.
Exactly.
Yep. But Southwest Water's always been individual.
Individual utility.
Yep.
Yep.
That's different.
No, we got dry utilities and, you know, public water, I guess.
Right.
I move to accept utility permit seventeen forty-one for Mr. DeShock.
Motion by Marv. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Wayne. Um, kind of similar question. Does Southwest require any casing or anything when they?
I usually haven't. Yes, I do. Yep. With water lines.
It'd be wise.
Yep. Yeah, we do.
Okay, so that's in the permit.
Similar to how the state handles their roads.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none. Marv?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
I'll vote aye. That motion passes. Did you have anything else, Ken?
You all have to sign this.
Okay. And then, um, we had, uh, Marv's got a couple of questions too.
I got some stuff for you guys too.
Good that you did. Listen, Charlie's first. And we have a question for you also. We didn't want you to come here and not get involved.
Every application is different.
Seems like whoever Charlie had the last meeting here were kind of rough on him though.
About me?
Yeah, yeah. You're on, Charles.
I'm getting, I'm used to getting a get one, if I'm being honest with you. So he's a forgetful at least these. Couple of quick updates. Mercer twenty-six overlay bid letting, um, is getting pushed back to June fifteenth. It was regularly set for June first. We had to issue an addendum. Because, believe it or not, I guess the, uh, Beacon, Avila Beacon forgot to advertise. It was a mistake on their part and I, you know, clearly very apologetic about it, but, um. So as a result of that, in order to meet statute or century code, we had to issue an addendum and push the bid letting back so that the local paper would be allowed twenty-one days to advertise. So, um, no longer June one, now June fifteenth will be the bid opening for that.
Alice, can you make sure that's on the, updated on the agenda for fifteen?
Should we do ten o'clock?
Ten, ten AM, yeah.
And we'll accept bids until we close.
Up until.
No.
Yep. Um, the other thing I wanted to touch on was the box over South, the crossroads, that bridge, twenty-nine, one thirty-four, twenty. You know, we're experiencing supply chain issues in the industry, primarily in precast fabricated concrete products such as box culverts and all of the like, piping and everything. Um, I think it's very likely that even if we were to bid this project, that it wouldn't be able to be built in twenty twenty-two just simply because of supply chain issues. A recent email received from the state in Bryan Fuchs, there's a funding opportunity, grant money that is now available for any, any and all bridges. They don't have, have bridges to utilize, I guess, all the funds that they have. Kind of a unique situation. Yep, so, um, I chatted about it with Ken and I thought, you know, if we think about this logically here, as a, as opposed to utilizing local funds to pay for this, this bridge, why don't we apply for these funds through the state? Uh, which to my knowledge is an eighty-twenty split. Um, and mind you, we have a one point one million dollar budget on this project. And, um, the options that we have and there are several options I walked through with Ken. We'll actually end up having to have a meeting on site with, with the district if we do chase this money. I just would like to recommend that a commission today that Interstate Engineering submit an application for you guys on behalf of the county to get this, you know, go after this money, um, for twenty twenty-three construction. Knowing and understanding that it is extremely likely that we won't be b, building it until twenty twenty-three anyway, based on supply chain issues.
Maybe May next year.
Possibly.
Yes.
You're gonna guarantee those supply chain issues then?
Here we, so here's the deal with that too.
Yep.
We're, we're bidding, we're bidding out a box culvert in Morton County right now and the contract, it has a construction deadline of this year in the contract. And the contractors, their, their bid prices are inflating. They're admitting this to us before it's bid and they're having to pull boxes from Utah just to get them. So it, they're, I guess, understanding the, the issue with obtaining a box culvert. They're, you know, bumping up their bid pricing and also in fear of liquidated damages if they don't get it done before, you know?
Snow flies.
Right.
Yep.
How hard is the impact to our county right now because that bridge is out of service? We're gonna wait another year.
Yeah, that, that's, that's the, I think that's gonna benefit us in the application process because that's a part of it. I have it here. It's a question.
Right.
About the traffic impacts, the traffic. However, that doesn't negate the fact that you're sitting on it closed for another year or for now.
But whether we chase the money or not, it's possibly gonna be that same amount of time?
Right.
Correct.
Well, yeah, if you, right, if you can't get the box delivered and, and poured over there, uh, and it's not only Mercer County that's looking for the box.
Right.
Uh, they, we're, we're on the mercy of definitely of the manufacturer.
You, you could build it this year. You're gonna spend the premium, I would say, to get that done. You, you could build it this year. You're gonna spend the premium, I would say, to get that done. If anything short of ordering a box, the precast fabricated box you could cast in place, costs, design would have to change, cost would increase with that, but quite a bit. They don't really do that anymore.
Yeah.
Because of costs.
So if we buy.
But we never had the supply chain issues before either of them. What do you anticipate shooting from the hip to build it in place with costs of more?
Uh, I would say that it would go from probably, you know, this one, one to one point one billion dollar project to at least a one point seven to one point nine billion dollar project. Based on, based on, uh, the scope of work involved and the size of the boxes.
So if we were to pursue this, we wouldn't bid it and all this until we knew?
We'll bid it. I think we, well, here's the thing, it won't be, it'll follow state, state guidelines, so we would, you know, we would button up right away. We button up four oh four permitting. We would get this into bid letting of, like, say we shoot for like their November letting or, but in order to get, in order to get in their November letting, we'd have to get environmental stuff buttoned up quickly in a kind of quickly order. And get their plans and specs, which are pretty much done. That's not the problem. It's gonna be the, uh, the environmental stuff, making sure we're jumping all those hoops correctly for them and mechanics, so.
If we apply for this money, which I definitely agree that we should be doing, let's say we apply for this money, we're not gonna get it for eight months, and by some quirk of fate, we find a culvert, or I mean, a box culvert, in the meantime, before we're approved for this money, would we move forward with it so that it wouldn't be sitting there for another year?
So allocations that don't occur, I can, I would, I'll double check on that for you. So I, I don't think you're obligated to take the money until allocations, and I forget when allocations actually take place by the state. So they say, they preliminarily award you the money based on your application. They say, yeah, you'll be up to eight point, eight hundred fifty thousand, for example, on this budget. They'd say, yes, we have eight hundred fifty thousand dollars that we award you for this project. They don't actually allocate it, pull that money out, set it aside specifically for you until some period of time down the road within this process. So yes, they, yes, they tell you you have it, but I would imagine the reason that that process exists the way it does is maybe for perhaps situations like you're bringing up now, Marv, I don't know, where they say, okay, well, we're, we're actually gonna try to bid this out, and we change our mind, we, I don't know. If that, I mean, doesn't seem like that would happen, you know, usually you get free money, you take it, but I don't know. Maybe projects have moved forward without funds, or they need to fix that at legislative level before they figure out how money's being divvied, divvied out and.
So might be a reimbursement grant maybe too, or?
Absolutely, it is.
So we almost, we'd have to expend it and then we'd get our revenue back?
You were allowed to utilize it for, you know, construction engineering fees and, um, contractor costs were associated with the bids, you know. That's pretty much what you're allowed.
This money that's available in these grants that you mentioned from Bryan Fuchs, do they have a name or a title that they have for it?
Yeah.
If I make a motion, I want that title in it.
Uh, actually, I can tell you in just a second. Forget what the heck you call it. Search.
Everything's got an acronym, so it's gotta be something.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, New County Bridge Program. I reached out to him and made him aware of this too, that I was gonna have this conversation. And, uh, he's, he was very optimistic about it. He said, that sounds great, because I think they're looking for ways to help folks.
And they would be bid through the DOT then?
It would.
Okay.
Um, what did he call this?
Just, uh, Mr. Chairman and commissioners, uh, the way it looks, uh, just for discussion purposes, uh, the availability is, we see is very tight. And, uh, this isn't the only bridge in Mercer County, as Marvin refers to, uh, that for inspection, we have others that are gonna be coming down the pipe. And I, like Marvin said, I highly suggest that we, uh, apply for those funds through the state. Unfortunately, the road won't get, but apparently wouldn't get fixed either way this year at all. And, and go that direction and get her done for next year, and I know we'll have some more structures that didn't meet the standards, so. Just for discussion.
Yeah, it's tough when there's things that are outside of control that, I guess, make things that occur a certain way, but.
That's why we hired you.
So the, the, you are correct, it's an acronym. The new federal highway bill, I I J A, was passed, included, into legislation passed, included monies from bridges across the country.
That bridge number is twenty-nine one thirty-four twenty?
That is correct.
Okay.
All right, go ahead.
I move that Mercer County Grant Interstate Engineering to pursue I I J A grant money for Bridge twenty-nine one thirty-four dash twenty.
Okay, motion by Marv. Is there a second?
Have you gotten all of that, Allison?
Yeah, I got it.
Okay, poor girl.
Yeah.
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Wayne. Any discussion?
Well, I, I, I'll put my two cents. I think this is really the direction to go with this because, uh, because of, like you said, supply is one thing, and, and funding, we, we have others that we're gonna be running into. So if they have funding allocations, let's chase that as much as we can get it then. So I think we're heading in the right way.
I almost wish I knew if we had other issues with bridges right now, because we'd, we'd probably chase those too. This is for, this grant is available for, for projects to be built in twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five.
Okay.
So that.
Okay.
That tells me there's a significant dollar tied to this, that enough that they at least will consider, you know, future of the bridge issues that come up, so I think we should keep this in mind. Because this, what this, 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 what this allows us to do, it frees up local funds that we had tied to this.
Right.
You know, we had Mercer twenty-seven project that, I know we have issues that we're looking at overlaying on that. That's an eleven mile overlay. That's not a small project. Um, uh, it just does a lot of things for.
For us.
In my opinion, for the county.
Yep. You bet.
Yeah.
Any other discussion on the, on the motion for the grant application? Seeing none. Marv?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
I'll vote aye. That motion passes.
Marv, give me that bridge number again.
Twenty-nine dash one thirty-four dash twenty.
Okay, one thirty-four, okay.
Okay. Anything else, Charlie?
I don't think so. Oh, sorry, yes, I did want to bring up one thing, and I apologize. I don't have stuff to share with you guys today. I'll make this really quick. So the, um, I, I'd like to suggest that the commission entertain the idea and consider, we've been, I've been chatting with Ken and Rachel on right-of-way negotiation, uh, an established and approved right-of-way negotiation, uh, form or policy for projects in the future going forward. We're running into these situations, especially on federal aid projects where right-of-way is required, which this bridge potentially will be, where we can at least have some monetary value or something in place. Uh, fencing, monetary value of a, based on per square foot or acre, something in place that we could bring to the table for these negotiations with property owners as part of that land acquisition process, that right-of-way acquisition process. Because the state's gonna require, the Uniform Act requires it. Any federal aid that you have, you're gonna have to essentially come, come to the table with something, and if they disagree with it, if property owner X disagrees with it, then we talk, we entertain the idea of, you know, um, appraisals or anything like that moving forward to get that figured out.
Figured out, yeah.
Dunn County has got a, stuff that they do, we work with them. I think we shared that example with Ken and Rachel. They've looked at that. We should probably draft something up and maybe bring it to the commission for consideration. It's not a huge pressing matter, obviously, right now, but we should have something figured out, in my, in my opinion, for projects in the future.
Can you add it to the agenda for our next meeting, and you provide it?
Yeah.
Please?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. You got a question on?
On the bridge area.
Yeah.
As an inspection.
I have a question on the bill. Not so much the dollar value as exactly what it is for. This is a billing for an amount of one thousand seven hundred seventy-seven, which is Mercer County's nineteen percent share of bridge inspection load rating. I'm just curious, if this has to do with what we're paying DOT for bridge inspections?
Yep.
Yes.
What percentage are they with their inspections on the bridges in our county that they have completed?
Completed.
It's, you can.
So what percentage of the bridges have been inspected? All of them? So our understanding is that all the bridges have been inspected that are on their list. However.
On their list.
They, they, they re-inspect these bridges, uh, they, every other year, two years. So every two years, they re-inspect these bridges unless the structure is deemed, uh, in such good shape, I guess I'll word it that way, such as a newer box culvert or something, right?
Right.
They will, they will actually push that back to every four years as a four-year cycle. Uh, and now, I don't believe it, the, I don't, I don't believe that the, uh, that the frequency has changed necessarily from the his, in the past. It's just the cost associated with it's changed now that they're, they have utilizing third parties consulting firms to do this out of, you know, some local, some not, you know? And the cost of that service has increased, so that's my understanding of it, but it's every two years. So what they're going to inspect this year would have been inspected in twenty twenty.
So when are we gonna receive the reports of what has to be repaired in the next two years?
We get that through inspect, oh, what's gonna be?
Required to be repaired within the next, in the next two years.
That's a great question. That's, we get those from Bryant. We get those from the state when they get them done.
If they flag a bridge, then it's, we get it immediately.
They have.
Or efficiency.
In their agreement, I should say this, I believe they have eighteen months, I believe was the, was the timeframe, I believe. I'll double check that for you, but I think that the firm, the third-party firm they hire has eighteen months to create a load rating report based on the critical issues that they're finding on a bridge for whatever, you know, whatever it may be. Hence, I think twenty nineteen was this twenty-nine one thirty-four twenty bridge, I think is when it was inspected. And we got the load rating report in mid-October, and they said, hey, it needs to be closed October thirty-first, so.
Real quick, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and that was their flagging.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. I think that's great. They're doing a good job. I mean, it's, like, I said this before, I mean, it's a double, double-edged sword. It's, it, I think it's right for the public safety that they're, they're being this thorough in their inspections, but it, it's also problematic because it's cost, it's cost, cost that weren't, you know, planned for, accounted for, and these aren't issues that just arrived overnight. They had been there for, in some cases, a few decades.
The state was inspecting.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, not, not only the cost, and, you know, uh, all of a sudden, this thing has to be shut down. Well, the local people, uh, it, it can be devastating, you know.
Burdensome, yeah.
A real burdensome, because you can't, maybe can't get out of there no other way. So we like to know this, like you said, a lot earlier in thirty days.
Yeah, I agree.
Ten days, yeah. Because.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, it's not your fault or anything. Don't get me wrong, but that.
You don't know, Ken?
That's.
I mean, Charles?
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Problematic.
Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, there's one other thing underneath the road, underneath the, Ken, it's got the County Road Services, just type for a second. I, I penciled a letter together. Last week, we had a meeting, and it was stated that, uh, the county has county road services that we used to do. So, and I said at that meeting, I said, I'll go talk to Ken and see what those were, because I was unaware of it. So I penciled together a letter and I sent it, Ken has a copy. I'm not sure if you guys, do you want another copy? Okay? So I'm just giving this to the board. Alice, would you mind emailing a copy of this to, uh, Lisa and Jean, just so that they have it? If you would please. This is just for your information. One thing we used to do, crack ceiling, that never was very profitable, was mostly like a favor. We have a liability when we do that, and we're not a private contractor, we're not bonded. I recommend, and I'm pretty sure this has pretty much ceased to exist. Selling culverts, you see my, these are my comments. Ken gave me some information, so if there's objections or comments, send them right to me. Selling culverts, we're not a retailer. We can sell our used culverts that don't meet our spec, no problem with that, but the cul, culverts that we have are ours, and we're not a retailer, so that was never a big money maker. We're not in the business to, to be in business. We're in the business to maintain our county roads. Selling gravel, I brought that up, and I'm gonna ask that, that gets put on the agenda for our next meeting, Alice, please. Gravel policy, selling gravel to private individuals. I think our board needs to come to some kind of an agreement or policy so that these hard decisions aren't forced upon us right away. We have to follow our policy, and we should establish what that policy is. It's going to impact us down the road. Approaches, that was always a loss to our county. Now, I built an approach in twenty-six, twenty thirteen. I did it myself. I can't remember where I got the culvert from. I think I bought it out of Mandan, but I did it all myself. And I totally expected that that was what I should be doing. I didn't expect the county to be paying for it. Leading private drives. Now, this one here needs to be brought up again, because we had discussion on this in past meetings, and we do incur a liability. And part of what we discussed, if I remember correctly, and please remember that I'm just trying to remember, we said we would do them once a year. Or twice, I don't remember exactly what it was, when we were in the area, to keep our costs down, so. And then, in the bottom line, number six, this just shows some conservative measures that we have gone down in our road department. We've gone from twenty individuals in twenty-eleven down to sixteen, and we've reduced one road greater. So they're trying to be very proactive and being conservative on their expenses and still maintain our county services that need to be, that are required to be maintained. So that's just for you guys to know and to, to share. I said I would update you, and I've done so.
Anything else with roads? All right, thanks, Ken and Charlie. Uh, we'll move on to Summit Carbon Solutions update. Joey, Joey here?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, good morning. Name is Joey Barachi.
I thought it was just for me.
Name is Joey Barachi and with Turnkey Logistics. We've been contracted by Summit Carbon Solutions to do all their non-environmental permitting throughout the entire two thousand miles of this project. And I'm here today to give the first of our quarterly project updates. Real quick, those are just some frequently asked questions. And I apologize, I just realized out in the parking lot that the statistics didn't really come up on the, on the numbers, and I'll be going over those, uh, for you also. But what I can do is I can email all that, and you will have that later. Okay. The ethanol industry is integral to the long-term health and the agri, of the agricultural industry. The Summit Carbon Solutions project will enable ethanol to be sold in emerging markets, which allows the thirty-two ethanol partners to keep their plants running. As a result, farmers can continue selling their corn for a premium and protecting their way of life for generations to come. Summit Carbon Solutions will bolster, bolster the ethanol and agricultural industries that are so critical to the Midwest economy. The ethanol industry supports three hundred and sixty thousand jobs, contributes more than forty-five billion to the annual GDP, provides fourteen billion boost to grain markets. The project will lower the carbon intensity scores for the thirty-two ethanol plants who have chosen to partner with Summit Carbon Solutions. This will enable the ethanol plants to keep their doors open and allow, uh, farmers to continue selling their corn for a high value. Summit contracted with a company called Ernst &amp; Young. They're a global leader in accounting to do an economic impact study for this whole project. Summit is putting in four point five billion dollars for the overall project. But for North Dakota during the construction phase, the total investment is eight hundred and ninety-eight million. Uh, state and local taxes that Summit will be paying is sixty-one million. Total labor income is three hundred and ninety-two million. Average wage of employees is sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and nine dollars. Once construction has been completed, it enters into the operations phase, which has an annual expenditure of eighteen million. State and local taxes of eight million and the average wage of employees will be ninety-four thousand, three hundred and forty-one. During construction, I, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but it's eleven thousand jobs across the entire project. During the operations phase, uh, it's about one thousand, one hundred jobs, permanent jobs throughout the project. Now, for Mercer County, the total investment by Summit is eighty-four million, four hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars with the annual new property tax of four hundred and eighty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars. Okay, for a more direct update on what's going up, uh, going on with the project is Summit is going to, they're still on schedule to start construction summer of twenty twenty-three in one or more places. Where that's going to be, we just don't know yet. And just the last month, they've acquired one hundred miles worth of easements across the project. Right now, I'm collecting all the information and requirements for all the permits. So in the near future, we'll start submitting those permits to the counties. Summit, uh, their partnerships right now, of course, of the thirty-two ethanol plants that have signed on with us. And Men, Menacota Power Cooperative has joined in a partnership with Summit for their CO2 storage. Uh, then there's a company called Blue Ammonia Project that is a partner. And the investors, John Deere is an investor, Continental Resources came on about a month ago and invested two hundred and fifty million dollars into the project. Summit Agricultural Group, Tiger Infrastructure, and over half of the ethanol plants have invested into the project. Uh, there's a new company called TPG Rise Climate that has just invested, uh, so I don't know much about them at this time. But here's the part that I like the most. Uh, Summit wants to do a community outreach and invest into all the communities, all the counties that are impacted by the pipeline across all five states. As an example, there's one county that, uh, wants to create a sidewalk system to link all their neighborhoods in the city to all major recreational facilities, schools, commercial areas, the Cowboy Trail and the community center, but they just don't have enough money. So we're contributing to their effort. Some other examples, uh, if you have some storm damage, uh, adaptive playgrounds, golf tournaments, I know there's scholarships that are given at these golf tournaments, uh, donations, food drives, equipment for fire departments, laptops for schools, those are just some examples. So what I'm asking is if you guys just want to get together and discuss it and maybe prioritize a list, then that list would be given to me and I would hand it up to Summit and we would just take it from there and see what we could contribute to the community. And that's pretty much it.
One system that you're probably, that we should think about or touch on is the, uh, the, uh, radio system to our ambulances, our fire departments and those types of things because it's, it's over three thousand dollars a radio type deal. And that's a huge impact when you only get, you know, twenty thousand bucks for the whole year or so. And, uh, I, I think that'd be one area that just off the top would really help, uh, our local response units, in other words.
Sure. Well, what I've been doing in the other counties, uh, just compiling that list and giving it to the auditor, in this case, Shauna, and she would get it to me and then I, I would push it up the ladder, so if you want to discuss all that. Once again, I gave all those numbers to you. I know you can't see them. You got to hold the paper at a certain angle, so apologize about that. I didn't realize it. I will send that over, uh, by email. Also, I have a, a map of the overall project through the five states and where it comes through the county here. I'll send that. And we also have, uh, material backing up those statistics, uh, from Ernst &amp; Young, so I can forward those to you and.
Okay. Um, Shannon actually left, uh, her last day was last week. Samantha is our new auditor.
Hello, Samantha.
So you'll have to update your, uh.
I need to get your email. Okay, uh, any questions or?
The only question that, well, it's not an only question, but, so when you say construction, that's just the pipeline or does that include wells too? Like, is Summit just the pipeline?
No, just the construction. I know we're doing the wells up here. Uh, that's kind of out of my area, so.
Okay, so you're talking just pipeline?
Just pipeline construction, yes. Well, the, the majority of it is pipeline construction, yeah.
How many ethanol plants did you say are, are signed up to use your?
We just signed up a thirty-second.
How many are in North Dakota?
Don't know that answer, but I know there's two hundred of them roughly throughout the project coming from Iowa all the way up here, within reasonable distance for, to tie into our pipeline.
When you send those numbers, hopefully being black ink, that white ink is a bugger, but I just keep teasing you a little bit. I would like to know how many ethanol plants in North Dakota are going to be taking advantage of this carbon storage. I see what you say that for, for Mercer County, what the possible benefit, the total investment and what the taxes would be.
Yes.
I was asked by a state representative. Said, Marvin, what is the benefit for North Dakota? So I'm asking you that. I'll just ask you the same question that was asked me. What, for carbon capture and storage, what is the, what are the benefits? You told me some of them for, for North Dakota.
Yeah, and, and that, that is basically it. What, what's going to happen is, uh, the government's going to levy taxes against all these ethanol plants because they have to get their carbon score down. If they can't get it down, then they're going to slowly go out of business. They go out of business, they quit buying as much corn. So it's just a, a cycle. Now, when they start, uh, putting this, uh, carbon into the pipeline and sequestering it into the ground, they can increase production, so they'll be able to purchase more corn. So that's how, you know, it, it, it keeps the economy stable or helps keep the economy stable for the, for the farmers.
And that's the federal program as far as what those requirements are? It's not any state or local, it's all federal driven?
Yeah, it's federal, yeah.
Okay.
Any questions? Any other questions?
I think we're, we're good.
Okay. Thanks, Joey.
Got it. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
All right. Uh, we got Darwin again with the Mercer County Sheriff and Law Enforcement Center?
Yes. I'm going to talk about the big brown elephant over here, folks. I'm one who did not vote for this jailhouse expansion over here and I got some curious questions. One of them is what are we going to do to fill it up and make use of it? I don't know if there's been any effort or discussion on that. And whenever that happens, there's always concerns and there's always issues that cut, pop up that people aren't aware of. Now, I know they're, they're importing some, uh, federal felons in here now. And, uh, what I'm asking is you folks, I don't know if any of you have the, uh, law enforcement portfolio?
Is that Jean?
The law enforcement, okay. But anyway, while, while, while we're moving into this, uh, uh, bringing in these, uh, transient inmates here, uh, we need to keep a sharp look on that to make sure if we can't make, keep this a revenue-neutral program. Now, I'm deadly against big government and government-for-hire. Now, I got real issues with this program that he set up over here because we done heard him go around this county from one end to the other and lie, lie, lie about the needs of this county because I've been a good, I, the people I know here, we're good people. We got a good citizen here. We're God-fearing folks. We don't, we don't harass and, and, and we take care of our own business. So I don't know where this idea that we are going to start locking up fifty of our, our citizens in Mercer County come from. We ain't got a bunch of criminals out here burning down the cities. We ain't got a bunch of criminals out here, uh, you know, laying in the streets. Uh, we're a good community here. So I have a real, a real hard time adjusting to that concept that we're going to have such an influx of crime like they were going around here and scaring everybody in the county of, you got to vote now or you lose your chance. And I'm telling you what, we need to keep an eye on this program. The citizens of this Mercer County should not burden, bear, bear the burden of taking care of inmates from other counties, the state or anywhere else unless we get adequately compensated for it. And that's the other areas over here at the, uh, Law Enforcement Center also. We got a BCI group down here. We're the, I think the only one left in the state that got these guys camped out here and using our facilities. Make sure the Mercer County's getting adequately compensated, so it ain't a burden on our shoulders. We got a BCI up here in Besmark. They're bigger than heck. They got all kinds of resources to handle what they need. We don't need them just sneaking around here, hanging around, just pretending they're doing something, okay? We need to make sure that there is some, some progress out of what we're investing in. Because like I said earlier, we got a foreclosure sign on this community and we just had a gentleman here with this CO2 stuff. Now, I'll tell you what, the plants need CO2 to green. That's the number one chemical they need to make chlorophyll. So I, if I, this is a big government BS myself. But anyway, we need to take a good, hard look and I'm, I'm asking you to set up a program with this sheriff office over here to see that they keep giving you guys the running data of what is costing us over there. So we can ha, sit here and, and compare apples to apples and see if the citizens of, of Mercer County are bearing the burden for their big government program over here because that's what it looks like to me. We got this, now, I was called a liar the other day, someone, when I told someone we had a basketball court over here in this jailhouse. Now, I don't know about you guys, but I find a little troubling with that. It's bad. It's not right. We could have used that as a, a community auditorium or something. And now we're all debtors, serfs, to this big old government-for-hire program over here. So I want you all to just take a look at that and you should have a discussion of what's going to happen in the future because that foreclosure sign's been hung here. They're shutting down these plants. They're shutting down these mines. And this fellow right here, just with this CO2, uh, uh, sequestration there, he just done, pretty much told you the same thing. They're going to charge the heck out of these folks and our rates are going to go out of the, uh, over the roof. And it just ain't right. Now, this sheriff we got over here, folks.
Darwin, can I interrupt you for a second here? I want to make a couple corrections or at least
Sure.
address a few of your comments.
Sure.
When it comes to the federal inmates.
Yeah.
They come here, we get compensated. We are tracking the revenue and the expenses for it. When it's time for them to be, be released, it's not here in the county. They go back to wherever they can.
Okay. Well, that's good to know because that's a concern, you know. I, you, I'm, I'm, I've been tapped into the court system up here my entire life. My wife, thirty-five years up here in September. It's something I, I did every day of my life is give her a chance and talk about her job and what's going on. So I learned a little bit about what's going on. And there is a separation of powers. These folks over here at the jailhouse, they do their rest and everything and that state's attorney, he's supposed to keep them on, on their toes. So hopefully, and this gentleman we got now seems to be a good guy. So I'm glad to hear that you guys are doing a little, keeping up on that, but is it revenue-neutral? I mean, are we getting enough? Because right now, we got, what, twelve, thirteen over here and we got fifty empty, empty cells there, you know? And just the concept is totally, totally, totally wrong to go and, and pour that on the community. But that's done, it's done and over and we just have to look ahead. So I'm just asking you to be cautious about what comes in here. Be cautious of what the programs they come bringing forward you because this fellow we got over here, he just done celebrating the second anniversary as a convicted criminal for his DUI. Now, we got to pay attention to that stuff. We just had a sheriff over in, in Minnesota that was busted for trying to diddle little children. These guys are drunkards, need to go. And that is what my last, uh, uh, suggestion here and request is that this board sit down and you ask your state's attorney to, you, you get a consensus with your state's attorney and you write up a letter of no confidence and you ask for that man's resignation today, tomorrow. Not at the end of the year. There should be no reason, we're just, we're paying that drunkard to sit here and draw ten grand a month of salary. It's wrong. It's wrong. He got a little slap on his pinky from his law enforcement association, but then he done shut this place down when this COVID hit because that's when he got his DUI. So he didn't even have to show up for work till he got his license back. You folks, I know you don't want to deal with this. I know you just want him to fade away like the rest of us, but it is only right. You see, I'm a United States citizen first and foremost. When I graduated from high school back in nineteen, in nineteen seventy-six, I left with a diploma and a copy of the United States Constitution handed to me by the heroes of my time, our American Legion. These folks sacrificed and it is equal justice under the law for everyone in this. It's a very short read. It's about seventeen pages. And this should be handed out to every, call every high school graduate in this county instead of a darn condom. It is ridiculous what's going on in this school district. But back to the United States Constitution, this is the founding principle of law and order and equal protections under the law. It's very specific. And you get into that North Dakota Century Code, it's an easy read and I encourage you all to brush up on that, on what the obligations are of the sheriff, the state's attorney and every other elected official up here. You're going to be, it's not a bad read either. Either is this. This is our guiding foundation of this country. And right now, folks, I don't watch ABC, NBC, CBS, CNN or Fox. Twenty-fourteen, they dropped the MONT Act, which protected us from the propaganda of our government. They now are spewing their propaganda and you, and you, and you, and everybody in here who has white skin, owns a gun and has a Bible in their hand is a domestic terrorist distorted to our intelligence committee, community. That is wrong, folks. We got some people that took over this country in twenty-twenty that have taken us down the wrong road. We need to really pay attention to the big picture because the struggles are not going to be small. We got a Hovin and we got a Kramer right now, clapping like a seal, ready to send our boys over there and goose step with a bunch of ass-up Nazis and killed some more people. Murder, murder, murder is all them folks been doing and we need to stop it. This is the United States of America. We're good people. Mercer County are good people and we don't need a bunch of militants running around here stopping our rights and re, and refusing to act like they should, an American citizen of the United States. Thank you all. Just keep top of business and we will have a good operation setting up here. I have been working on a project. I have been outlining a project that I will be bringing here at a later date to try and help fill that over there. I have been outlining three other projects in this state to use the infrastructure that already is here to, to propel this county forward with some jobs and some income. I will be bringing them proposals to you folks after this next election, once everything gets ironed out there. So now you folk, I see you got a short schedule here. I ain't going to complain that, but let's start putting in some scheduling in here. let's start putting in some scheduling in here to start about bringing in some industry in here, reaching out to these politicians who are out there clapping like a seal saying they get all this big pile of money for this Green New Deal. Now, we're going to grab hold of some of that and we're going to make Mercer County great again, okay, folks? Thank you for listening to me.
Thanks, Darwin. Thanks, Darwin. Um, let's see, did we address the county road fund questions?
No.
I think that's the only thing else.
So I see there's left, unless I missed something?
That was your question, Mark?
Thank you for being here. Now, I need to, do I address you as Sam or Samantha?
Samantha for now.
Thank you, I won't do that. And if you would, please send me your email address or I can give you a piece of paper and you can write it down.
I've got one here, I'll give it to you.
Okay, because I sent the letter out, but I didn't address it to you and I didn't mean that to be insulting or not to include you, but I didn't know it. Okay? All right, I have some questions. I sent out, or I gave the board some questions on the audit recommendations from last year for the year of 2021 and asked it to be addressed at this meeting. I have only two main questions, and you're going to have to help me with that, Samantha. The first one is, the board approved 2021 budget amendments for county road, or for state road. I'm trying to think of where that sheet of paper is, where that piece of paper is. Anyway, we approved the, I know where it's at. State Highway Fund 2150. We approve an amendment of 144,494.90, or 60, okay? The correct amount, that number was in here, whatever the reasons are, doesn't matter, it was an error. The correct amount was 65,795.8. So being the board approved that amendment, that budget amendment, do we need to make another motion to put the correct number in?
I'm going to have to refer, I believe this is something that I emailed back to you guys.
No, you may mail the paper back, but that question wasn't answered.
Gwen can probably answer that question better than I can, because it was her books that there was a mishap, so if I can get her to.
We can table it, but there's no problem, but I want that, from, from where I sit, it looks like we as a board approved an amendment for an erroneous number. So we as a board should probably correct that. That's, if you wanted to schedule that for our next meeting, that's the question.
Yeah, let's do that.
The second thing, second question, see, I told you this wouldn't take long. Our official county financial reports are in error at this time, okay? For example, that county road fund says that we had an expenditure of 1.012 million, and actually we couldn't have, because we only had 933,000. So can we update and get our official county financial report corrected?
I don't actually have that information in front of me at this time, so if this is something that I could look into and get back to you with?
I can give you, yeah.
Or if I can look at what you're looking at?
Oh, absolutely, this is what you sent, or what I sent. Do you mind if I come over?
Yes. Yes, I don't mind.
When this whole collars heat up, we have to, next is the second to get our laser. This is just an example, this is our expenditure report. It says that 2150 State Highway, we expensed not much more than 1.50, or we cushioned it.
I was sorting that.
So this, this report is, is in error.
Right, and so what I'm, I think what we referenced here was that there was a journal entry that was entered wrong.
Okay. Can this report be corrected?
No, I can, I can meet with IT, I know that they've had issues with this before, but it's something that hopefully we can correct in the future, so I'll have to get with him. 2021, oh, it's 22.
Well, no, that's, that's January, so it's 12/31/2021.
Yep, yep.
So that was my question. So the answer, you want to answer that at the next meeting too?
Yes, please, thank you.
Any other questions, Mark?
No, but I'll explain this to the board. The first question is, is very simple, we approved an erroneous number, doesn't matter how it got there, but we, and how, what do we correct? The second question was, we have an expenditure report that says that we expensed $1 million, we only had 933. Can this report be corrected, so it reflects the true values, because it's historical information? She's going to answer, hopefully we'll get an answer next meeting. That's all I have on this. Appreciate you looking into this and getting those numbers to match out.
Okay. I don't see anything else on the agenda. Chris just walked in, were you supposed to be on the agenda?
I'm not on the agenda, but I'm just checking on the project and I'm glad you know things are started and moving along really well, so.
Okay. All right. We're at the end of our agenda, is there anything else out? I think we hit everything out here, so if we got questions for Chris, we'll do it after the meeting.
That's all.
Sounds good.
Oh, let's introduce Samantha. Samantha replaced Shannon, she's our new auditor. So you send the bills to her now?
That's right, and I need to talk to her.
And we'll send the back end about half, half piece.
And we'll be at four.
Every 18 months?
Yep. All right, seeing no further business on the agenda, I'll adjourn this meeting for the Mercer County Commission, we'll see you in a couple weeks.
So just a couple questions, Brad, Wes?